Good evening, council members, members of the public. This is Elle McCarron, Assistant City Attorney, and I'd like to present to you an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 4, Articles 1 through 5 of the Oxnard City Code for purchasing, contracting, and public projects. Staff is recommending that the Finance and Governance Committee review the proposed ordinance that will repeal and replace the city's current purchasing system that's codified in Chapter 4 of the Oxnard City Code, and recommend that the City Council introduce and waive the first reading of the proposed ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard, Repealing and Replacing Chapter 4, Articles 1 through 5 of the Oxnard City Code for Purchasing, Contracting, and Public Projects." So, the City Attorney's Office, in conjunction with the Finance Department, the Purchasing Division, and the Public Works Department, have prepared a comprehensive update to the city's purchasing system that's codified in Chapter 4 of the Oxnard City Code. The last comprehensive update to the purchasing system occurred in 2018. Oxnard is the 22nd largest city in California and is a full-service general law city. General law cities are obligated to adhere to the requirements of the California Government Code, Sections 54201 through 205, regarding local agency procurement requirements, along with Government Code Sections 3400 and 4000 through 4563. This is regarding trade names, professional service solicitations, and subcontracting requirements, among other items. Additionally, the city is obligated to adhere to Public Contract Code Sections 20,100 through 22,199 regarding the procurement of public works projects whenever it's establishing or updating its purchasing system. So, a review of the city's current purchasing system revealed the need for a necessary overhaul to provide clear and concise direction to city staff on contracting and procurement procedures, including detailed steps to follow for procuring goods, services, professional services, and public projects, in addition to a standalone code section that describes purchasing and contracting authority. Let's see. "Oxnard must operate and maintain a significant portfolio of infrastructure and public services. The city utilizes contractors, consultants, and other service providers that assist in maintaining city infrastructure and services that Oxnard residents rely upon on a daily basis. This includes 1,037 miles of streets, a municipal water utility with 504 miles of water lines, and over 43,000 water service connections, and several drinking water treatment facilities; a wastewater utility that processes 27 million gallons per day and maintains 415 miles of sewer lines; and an advanced water purification facility that creates recycled water. Oxnard also provides municipal solid waste services at its Del Norte material recycling facility, where over 295,000 tons of solid waste and 24,900 tons of recycled material and 22,000 tons of organic waste are processed annually. And, the city provides trash pickup services to 34,480 residences and 5,082 commercial facilities and apartment buildings, utilizing 102 city trash vehicles. Additionally, the city of Oxnard is responsible for managing and maintaining a housing department that provides critical services to Oxnard residents in need of affordable housing and related services; a full library and library services; a full-service city police department and city fire department with eight fire stations; 53 parks; 30 special districts; as well as city-owned and operated buildings, facilities, and fleet vehicles. The timely and organized purchase of goods, supplies, and services is imperative to the efficient function of city government. The procurement process is highly regulated through required policies and procedures, as cited earlier in this presentation, and these ensure that the city obtains the best products and services at the lowest cost or best value to the city. And this is achieved through the use of transparent and equitable process that is in conformance with state and local law. The procurement process can limit the city's ability to procure goods and services through time-consuming and cumbersome processes, procedures, and policies. And, the ordinance before council aims to provide additional procurement tools to assist staff in timely and efficient procurement of goods and services." So, for fiscal year 25, the city has 646 contracts with different service providers and contractors that are performing work throughout the city. These contracts are subject to the requirements of the city's purchasing system and state law. The number of contracts the city has at any given time fluctuates due to expirations, terminations, or closeouts. And, of the 646 contracts in fiscal year 25, more than half were initiated in prior fiscal years, since most contracts have up to a five-year term. Currently, there are approximately 619 open contracts. The city also issues purchase orders for goods, supplies, and equipment. In fiscal year 2023, the city issued 914 purchase orders. In fiscal year 24, it issued 1,161. And, for fiscal year 25, 827 purchase orders have been issued with an expectation that it will reach a similar level as fiscal year 24. The city's current purchasing system underwent minor revisions on May 17, 2022, with Ordinance 3016, and this amended the signature authority and approval thresholds for certain city staff. Prior to this, the city's purchasing system underwent substantial revisions on June 19, 2018, when the City Council adopted Ordinance 2943, which overhauled the city's previous purchasing system that was established in May of 2000 by Ordinance 2520. So, the proposed ordinance strengthens the city's purchasing system by enunciating clear standards regarding purchasing authority, award levels, competitive solicitation processes, and provides explanations and guidance to city staff on the process and procedures that must be followed when procuring goods and services on behalf of the city. In this presentation and the staff report before committee and council, we have provided the current purchasing system so that you can compare and contrast the difference between this proposed ordinance and the current system. And you will see that the proposed ordinance contains far more detail than the current system. Also, the proposed purchasing system is drafted to work in conjunction with the city's Tyler Munis Enterprise Resource Planning System, or ERP, which is a citywide financial reporting tool that operates as a system of checks and balances for all purchases and contracts. The proposed ordinance and the ERP work together to strengthen oversight of the city's purchasing and contracting system. Each contract and purchase order solicited by the city is uploaded into the ERP system, where a series of approvers review the contract. Where a series of approvers must review the contract, the pricing, the terms, the scope, the solicitation information, and financial information to ensure compliance with the city's purchasing system, as well as the financial controls provided by the ERP. The ERP approval process is rigorous and mandates review by department directors, risk management, the finance department, city manager, city attorney department, as well as the purchasing department. The ERP, along with this proposed purchasing ordinance, will ensure all city solicitations, contracts, and purchases are conducted in accordance with state law. The current purchasing ordinance requires updating to provide clear explanations on the procedures and processes for different types of solicitations. The current ordinance directs the reviewer to California State Codes, and it requires the reviewer to search for and interpret the state codes to determine the appropriate requirements for soliciting goods, services, and public projects. The proposed ordinance also provides guidance for the use of on-call agreements, which is not included in the previous ordinance, as well as multiple award schedules, which is not included in the previous ordinance. It also provides guidance on the Uniform Cost Construction Accounting Act for public projects, listing out the very specific public contract code requirements, which are not all listed out in the current ordinance. And, it includes, the proposed ordinance includes other common purchasing practices that are also not included in the current purchasing ordinance. Lastly, the proposed ordinance incorporates updates passed by the California Legislature in AB 2912, which are updates to the Public Contract Code that went into effect on January 1 of 2025. So, the proposed purchasing ordinance reorganizes the purchasing system into five separate articles. Article 1 contains the general provisions of the city's purchasing system. Article 2 describes the process for soliciting public works projects. Article 3 describes the process for soliciting professional services. Article 4 describes the process for soliciting general services, goods, supplies, equipment, and Internet technology services. And, lastly, Article 5 contains miscellaneous procedures that are applicable to some city solicitations. A list of each of the articles and their corresponding sections have been provided in the next series of slides. And, after the section heading, you can see there's parenthetical information indicating whether or not that section is new, updated, or a combination of both. And if there is no reference after it, that has been carried over from the old purchasing ordinance. So, the proposed ordinance, it defines and describes the purchasing methods and procedures that may be utilized by the city in a manner that's easy for city staff to access, understand, and implement. There's a dedicated section describing contracting authority and delegation of authority. The proposed purchasing system simplifies the local vendor preference program, allows for electronic signatures, codifies the use of design-build projects for public projects, and it details emergency contracting procedures, among several other items that are not included in the current system. So, additionally, the proposed ordinance lays out the AB 2912 changes to the Public Contract Code, which increases the bidding threshold dollar amounts for informal and formal solicitations. Previously, staff could only enter into a negotiated contract or use force account for public projects under $60,000. That threshold has been moved up to $75,000. Now, informal public project solicitations are required for projects between $75,000 and $220,000. And, that's an informal bid, which will then go out to our contractor list, be posted on our website and our online bidding platform. And, finally, the dollar threshold for formal solicitations for public projects was increased from $200,000 to $220,000. The Assembly Bill also updates the definition of public work to include the term "installation", which is a critical update when defining what type of work is subject to the strict bidding requirements of the public contract code. Now, we're going to go ahead and go through Article 1, which is the citywide purchasing system. And here, we have about 15 sections. And, we start off with the purpose, and then we get into the definitions. And it starts with aggregate value, and it goes all the way through. I'm going to go through each and every definition here. I will touch upon aggregate value. And, that is a term that can be seen throughout the ordinance and the proposed ordinance. And that is the total value of the contract or purchase order for the life of that contract or purchase order. So, we are clearly enunciating the standard that the authority limits, and the delegation of limits, and the award limits in the new proposed ordinance are based upon the aggregate value, which is the total life of the contract. And it's moving away from the per-vendor-per-fiscal-year policy as that would create some confusion as to when certain authority thresholds kicked in or took place and required city manager and/or city council approval. So, this levels the playing field. It makes it equal for every single solicitation throughout the city. It's based on aggregate value. This will also help with greater efficiency and time management in processing the different types of solicitations, and will greatly help the divisions in responding to some of the smaller projects that typically may have to go to council when the otherwise wouldn't have to. And, it cuts down on competing interpretations of when something falls into specific authority thresholds. So, that is an important and necessary change. Okay. Also, in Article 1, the contracting authority, it now appears in a single section, and it retains the intention and purpose of the prior ordinance 3016, which amended the current purchasing ordinance that the signature authority would be consistent with the city's Tyler Munis ERP system. This goes a step farther and assists the ERP system when issuing task orders, change orders, and whatnot, because those now have specified authority levels as well. And it's detailed in this proposed ordinance. So, the contracting authority and the threshold dollar amounts for city staff identified in the prior purchasing ordinance and the current purchasing ordinance, they all remain at the same levels. So, there's no increase in the dollar amount approval that has been carried over from the old ordinance to the new ordinance. There are several new sections, as you can see in the citywide purchasing system article. And, these are: "A prohibition on project splitting and noncompliance with purchasing guidelines, and allow for such violations to be prosecuted as a misdemeanor." This is something that is used in other cities throughout the state, and it provides the city with some enforcement mechanisms to make sure that our purchasing system is strictly adhered to. And, we do hold taxpayer money, and we need to make sure that every purchase is solicited in the correct manner, and every dollar is accounted for. And this will assist us in enforcing these provisions. There's also a delegation of discretionary approval for designs, which is critical for the city to assert a design immunity defense in a tort claim filed against a city. And typically, you will see this issue raised in like a car accident, where they're claiming that the design of the intersection is defective or negligent. So, if you have design immunity, so in order to assert design immunity as a defense, the City Council needs to delegate design approval to its city engineer, architect of record for the city project, or some other city staff member, because they sign the plans and the specifications, and their discretionary approval of those designs form the basis for the design immunity defense. So, that's something the current city code and purchasing system does not have. And so, that's an important update. The next two sections that are very important as well and are not included in the current ordinance are awarding to multiple vendors and the use of on-call or as-needed agreements. So, these updates provide staff with the ability to competitively procure goods and services through a single solicitation by requesting bids, proposals, or prequalifications from multiple vendors and service providers. The single solicitation will allow the purchasing agent to award contracts to multiple qualified vendors and service providers, from which task orders may be issued, and it thereby expedites the city's ability to respond to issues and provide services for the residents of Oxnard, rather than having to issue a separate solicitation for each and every task or project. This update will significantly reduce the city's procurement time, which is of critical importance to the city's public works department. A common issue that's been raised by residents and businesses alike is the significant amount of time it takes for the city to complete capital improvement projects, as well as other repairs, installations, and construction needed throughout the city, which is due to, in part, long lead times for procuring services. Specifically, the current timeline for public works obtaining professional services is approximately seven and a half months, with the lower end being six months and the higher end being nine months. And this includes the development of the scope of work for the service, publicly soliciting the proposals, reviewing the submittals, conducting consultant interviews, as well as contract negotiations, and including preparing staff reports for council service providers with a cumulative total of contracts over $200,000. So, for these types of solicitations, for other types of solicitations that are not professional service-public project-related, the purchasing agent estimates that those solicitations also take, on average, six to nine months. By utilizing on-call agreements in conjunction with an aggregate value authority as stated in the updated ordinance, and issuing task orders against the larger awarded agreement, staff could have a task identified, reached out to a qualified consultant to request a proposal under the on-call agreement with the city. And after reviewing the submitted proposal, the task order against the on-call agreement can be issued and work can be started. And it's estimated that this process would take six to eight weeks, rather than six to nine months for the traditional solicitation process. This process would benefit all departments across the city, allowing for more effective and efficient procurement response times. So, over the last three fiscal years, the purchasing agent performed 70 solicitations in fiscal year 2023, 85 solicitations in fiscal year 2024, and is at 55 solicitations for fiscal year 2025. The Public Works Department issued 46 public project solicitations in fiscal year 2023. It issued 26 in fiscal year 24. And it is at 44 for fiscal year 25. And, it's important to note that the purchasing agent's solicitations for professional services must occur prior to the Public Works Department's solicitations, because the professional service provider performs design, engineering, architectural, or construction management services that must be completed before a public project, construction project can be solicited. So, decreasing the solicitation times for professional service agreements and other types of solicitations will allow public projects to be solicited within a shorter time period as well, oftentimes shaving off six to nine months. The period of performance for these on-call contracts will typically be in the order of three years, outwards of five years. And each procurement contract has a limit of $200,000 per task order as it's related to capital improvement projects, and $100,000 per task order for all other city projects, which is consistent with the proposed ordinance's contract authority limits. This will allow a reasonable time period to get work done under a longer-lived contract, and will increase the efficient use of staff time by only needing to solicit and compete the contract once every three or five years. Along the same lines of cost effectiveness and time efficiency is the ability to award to multiple vendors from a single solicitation. This will allow the purchasing agent to solicit goods, equipment, supplies, utilizing a matrix in which responsive vendors bid on items they can provide to the city, and then the city selects the providers with the lowest price per unit, rather than an overall aggregate low bid for all items requested. This also establishes a fair, transparent, and competitive process that meets Government Code requirements for single solicitation, multiple vendor awards. And it also allows the city to receive the best value or the best prices through a single solicitation. Some additional updates that can be found in Article 1s are updates to the exemptions from solicitation requirements. These are regular and routine items that don't lend themselves to the solicitation process. We also have approval as to form for the city attorney, which includes every type of procurement document available to staff. We also have our business license requirement in Article 1, as well as a section mandating that all of our service providers carry insurance. Next, we move on to Article 2. And Article 2 contains all of the requirements for public projects. And this article, it sets forth the informal and formal bidding procedures for public projects. And these procedures can be found in the Public Contract Code. However, they are repeated here verbatim so that staff can quickly go to our city code and look at the requirements for formal and informal bidding. They don't have to go track down the Public Contract Code, read through it, and then interpret what needs to be done. It's all right here for ease of use. And, as stated earlier, in here, we have the updated bidding threshold amounts that the legislature changed for January 1 of 2025. That's to assist also with inflationary pressures, which have bumped up the cost of everything. And so, this is to give some relief, allowing for cities to issue more informal solicitations or negotiated contracts for projects that just are slightly over the old limits. So, here, it's broken into Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 public projects. Tier 1 public projects are everything that's under $75,000. Those can be obtained through a negotiated contract, forced account by city staff. And, the departments or divisions have to go out and try to find three quotes, or call professionals off of a prequalified list, or off of our contractor list that is updated yearly. Next is Tier 2 public projects. And, these are public projects that are for dollar amounts in between $75,000 and $220,000. And these require informal bidding requirements. And lastly, we have Tier 3 public projects, and that is any public project over $220,000. And those are required to be formally bid. Some new information in this section is some guidance on the waiver of irregularities. Sometimes when bids come in, there are minor differences. And if they do not have a material effect or change the low bid, the city is able to waive those. So, we have that section in here. We also maintained the city's ability to reject all bids, as well as require bonds. That is also a California state law requirement. You need bonds for all public projects over a certain dollar amount. Lastly, we have updated information on public project contracts and prevailing wage when those apply. We've also updated the process for change orders, as well as the authority for processing and issuing change orders. Next, we have updated the Government Code requirements for brand or trade names. A city on a public project cannot require brand or trade names. They have to allow for an equivalent. And there's a process that we have to go through to allow for an equivalent. If we are going to require a brand or trade name, we must do so under one of the four exemptions. So, all of that information is contained here in the code, and it's easy for staff to access and review to determine if they can require a brand name or if they have to allow an equivalent for a specific project. Next, which is new, which the prior ordinance did not have, is what staff can do Next, which is new, which the prior ordinance did not have, is what staff can do if they receive no bids to a solicitation under the Uniform Cost Construction Accounting Act. If you don't receive any bids, then the city can go out on a negotiated contract, cutting down again on the time it takes to process the bids and their solicitations, as it does take a significant number of months to issue these bids because the bid packages are very large. There's specifications, there's plans, there's working details. Some of these bid packages are go from a couple hundred to over a thousand pages, and they do take quite some time to process. So if we and we have at certain times received no bids, even consistently rebidding it, so then this will give staff the ability to go directly to negotiate a contract and get the work done. Next, we have the updated section on emergencies for public projects. The Public Contract Code requires a very specific process if we are going to dispense with the public contracting solicitation requirements. We can only do so in limited circumstances that are considered an emergency and we have to follow a specific process. That process is laid out in here for staff to use and review if an emergency comes up and we need to dispense with the solicitation requirements in this article. Lastly, we are going to codify the use of designed build projects. City Council passed a resolution in October of twenty twenty-three, allowing city staff to procure public projects through the design-build method, which is where one entity will design the project and then will build it. The traditional method is to have two separate solicitations, one where you request a proposal for the design. They, that person or service provider provides the design and you then take that design and you issue a second solicitation for your public project, which is then completed by a separate contractor. So this is, this will condense those two processes, create hopefully efficiencies and make this more cost-effective as well, since the designer will be the builder. And we decided to go ahead and put this into the new Oxnard city code so that staff does not have to dig up the old resolution to find new requirements for design-build projects. Next, we have Article Three, and this is contracting for professional services. And it specifies the requirements for professional service solicitations and it describes the formal and informal solicitation requirements, as well as the on-call solicitation requirements, which there's no guidance on in the current purchasing system. The other update here is the requirement that all professional services must be made by contract. That is something that the prior ordinance does not require. Certain services under a certain dollar amount can be obtained without a contract. So this is not recommended as all professional services of any type or dollar amount should be on contract, have insurance and appropriate indemnification. Also, professional service contracts must be awarded on the basis of best value criteria through a request for proposals, and a proposal is different from a bid which requires a low price, whereas the proposal prices just one factor in determining whether the city is obtaining the best value from a professional service provider. This is also required through the government code for professional service providers engaged in engineering, architecture, landscape architecture and construction management, among other design professionals that are related to public projects. So you you can't do low bid on those and sometimes low bid will not get you the best value when it comes to professional design-type services. This section also contains direction on change orders and amendment authority, which is not included in the prior ordinance. And then lastly, this article details the emergency, urgency and immediate need contracting and solicitation procedures. It's laid out here very e- very easy to find, very easy to follow, so that if there's an emergency or urgent situation, staff can review the requirements and dispense with the procurement requirements in this article for professional services if the tenants of Section four dash forty-one are met. Next, we are moving on to Article Four, and Article Four is set up in a similar manner to Article Three. However, Article Four contains the purchasing procedures for soliciting goods, supplies, equipment, general services, information technology services and other transactions that are not public projects. Often services subject to this article may be subject to the state's prevailing wage laws, and this is stated in this article. This is a requirement for most general service agreements that pertain to certain maintenance and repairs that fall outside the definition of a public work subject to the bidding requirements of the Uniform Cost Construction Act. So there is confusion as to when prevailing wages will apply. And this codifies the state requirements that prevailing wages must apply must apply on public works falling into, falling outside of the Uniform Cost Construction Act, but within the Labor Code meaning. They're subject to public works. I'm sorry, they're subject to prevailing wage provisions for any agreement over a thousand dollars. So this is stated clearly here so that staff is aware when it is issuing or preparing its solicitations that this article, it also provides and lays out the informal and formal requirements for the solicitations subject to this article, as well as the procedures for for small purchases or micropurchases, which are are one-off purchases that are under five thousand dollars. And all solicitations subject to this article must be informally or formally solicited and placed on a contract or purchase order if they're under five thousand. So the purchasing agent has authority to determine under this article if a solicitation should be awarded on the basis of best value or lowest bid. The one exception to this may be for IT services. Typically, those are solicited on the basis of best value so that we make sure we are getting an internet technology service that works with the city's current configuration, security and data privacy needs. So this section also contains the same direction on change order and amendment authority found in the previous section, as well as the same exact procedures are enunciated here again for emergency and urgency contracting procedures when we need to obtain good supplies, equipment, maintenance, general services in an emergency or urgency situation. So staff will determine if those provisions apply and can obtain them without getting through the solicitation process. And lastly, we have Article Five. These are additional purchasing and contracting procedures. They may or may not apply to every single type of solicitation, but they are here and available for when staff or vendors need it. The first one is the Small Local Business Purchasing Preference Program. This is a complete overhaul of the city's current local preference program. So if you review the current preference program, I guess, and compare it to this one, you will see that this one is streamlined. It's easier to follow, and we believe it will allow for more local businesses, the ability to engage in our solicitations and potentially qualify for a five percent or a five thousand dollar incentive that could then take the local small business from, say, the runner-up bidder to the low bidder for a city's solicitation. So we're pretty excited about this as we feel that more local businesses may be able to take advantage of this program. In the past five years, and I believe it goes back even farther than that, we have records for two local businesses applying under the current purchasing preference program, and it did not make any difference in their bid. So they were not able to take advantage of the program. The formula, how you formulate the preference under the current ordinance is is very complex. It's very confusing. The dollar amounts are very high. It almost seems like it'd be really difficult for somebody to meet those thresholds. Also, the definition of a small local business exceeds the California state definition for a local business. So here in our definition section, Article One, we mirror the state definition of a small local business, which is far less restrictive than that, which is in the current purchasing ordinance. So we feel that far more small local businesses will be able to take advantage of this program and be competitive in the city's solicitations. Next, we have electronic and digital signatures. These current Oxnard city code and the current purchasing system does not include any guidance on electronic and digital signatures. So we have included that here. This basically mirrors the state codes for when you can have digital and electronic signatures. This will be very helpful for our contracting as many of our service providers use e-signature, DocuSign and other e-signature platforms. And this will allow for the city to accept those and use e-signatures itself. The only exception are things that are signed by the mayor are required to have a wet signature. And last but not least is the sale and disposal of unneeded equipment and property. This updates the current surplus property disposal section in the purchasing ordinance, which is, which is very sparse. So basically, this allows, the current one here allows the purchasing agent to dispose of any of the city's personal property through a public or private sale or destroying it or recycling it without going through a competitive bidding process. If the single item of property does not exceed five hundred dollars in current value or market value or salvage value. In the event that the property exceeds that value, the purchasing agent will go ahead and make a list of that and will submit it or present it to city council for authorization to sell, rent, destroy or recycle those items. So here we have we actually have a process as to how to dispose of the surplus property and it has some oversight. So this, that's definitely a needed update. Last but not least is the living wage section, and this is reserved, I believe it is reserved in the current purchasing system as well. The city council by motion in the early two thousands required that it's, that all service providers in the city pay a living wage to their employees. And the way this the way this section is implemented is through our contracts, our professional service contracts and our general service contracts, fleet contracts, landscape maintenance contracts, whatnot. We have the living wage policy as a term and condition in those contracts, as well as an exhibit that describes the policy and the dollar amounts. If council were to want to codify that policy at some point in the future, we could put it into this section, but for now we have left it reserved. So that is the end of the overview of the new proposed purchasing ordinance. Thank you.